We're at seven o'clock. I'll call the order for the Selectman meeting for October 7th. Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands. One nation, not under the law.
We'll start tonight with our public service announcements. You want to read those for us?
Okay. Once again, we want to remind you about getting your flu vaccine. The Board of Health will hold the following flu clinics. At Chelmsford Senior Center on Wednesday, October 16th, from 3:30 to 7:00 p.m., from 3:30 to 4:30, it'll be for those ages 65 and over, where the high-dose formula will be available. And from 4:30 to 7:00, it'll be for those ages three and older. Everyone must bring their health insurance cards. At the Chelmsford Town Hall here on 50 Buick Road, on Tuesday, November 12th, there'll be a clinic from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The high-dose formula will be available, and this clinic is for anyone ages three and older. Again, be sure to bring your health insurance cards. And the Board of Health is also going to hold the school-based flu clinics at the High School, McCarthy and Parker Schools, on Tuesday, October 22nd. Information and consent forms will be advertised through the school bulletins.
Thank you, Pat. And brings us to open session. Is there anybody that would like to address the board tonight in open session?
Hello, my name is Jerry Hall. I'm at 34 Lovett Lane. I know tonight you'll be talking about recommending the articles that have to do with Route 40 to the town meeting, and I urge you to do that. The Route 40 Committee's findings, I think, offer a good long-term needs for the town of Chelmsford. I think they're on the right side of history. I think they're also compatible with the people's concerns for noise and traffic. Now, you're going to hear other voices tonight that urge you to do not recommend. That somehow the committee was defective. I find that kind of surprising when you have two members from the Board of Selectmen, three members from the Planning Board, residents, one of whom who also served on the Planning Board at one time. So we're going to hear that there was really no data from the stakeholders. We've heard this argument. So let's take a look at the data. I sometimes feel like we're dinosaurs recommending dying industries for up there for commercial development. The original plan that we were, people assiduously rejected at the public hearing back in last summer had gas stations. You know, just today, they announced that the big three Volkswagen, GM, and Ford are spending billions of dollars to fully electrify their plant, their cars by 2027. GM today announced the layoff of 600 engineers who are internal combustion specialists. They're hiring 300 chemists for batteries and 300 programmers and coders instead. I think a gas station is kind of on the wrong side of history here. I think a bank is also on the wrong side of history that has a drive-thru. I think anybody under the age of 30 with a smartphone is making fun of any dinosaur like me that goes to the bank to deposit a paper check. Pharmacies, again, a pharmacy with a drive-thru, express scripts, pill pack, the internet. I know my son, who is a Marine who was injured on the job, gets a monthly supply and a big roll of bubble pack, and the pills are in order in which you're supposed to take them, and the time is printed on it, and you just pop, pop, pop. You never go to a drugstore.
Jerry, I'm just going to, you know, we're going to limit you to three minutes, just as a heads up.
You know, we're talking about chain restaurants, and if you look for the data in food and beverage in Bloomberg, an advertising agent, economists are talking about Weathervein, Outback, Olive Garden, all of those are closing stores nationwide. I don't see a big demand for what the venues that are open on 129th attracting new customers for that. A supermarket with parking for 150 cars with Peapod and Amazon and Whole Foods, I think that's another declining business model. So what's left? What do you put up there? You know, a kettle with barking dogs 24/7? I don't think that's compatible with people's concerns about noise. You know, the quarry, the asphalt Route 3, that's noise enough. High-density housing, I think you better check with the Finance Committee and the School Committee before committing to that idea. We also laughed last year at a hotel adjacent to a beautiful asphalt plant. Don't think so. Now, the pro-developers will tell us residents that maybe a McDonald's will be good for us because the food smell will overcome the stink from the asphalt plant. You know, folks, these ideas were rejected back in the summer of 2017 when over 200 people came out who were against these things. We keep hearing we're going to miss a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Oh, God, I wish it would be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. You had the opportunity last summer, you had the opportunity with the Route 40 Study Committee, there's an opportunity with the town meeting. You know, enough is enough. No is no. We don't want big commercial development up there. Now, we're going to hear tonight about a state grant to look at the interchanges on Route 3. The only one that isn't built out is Route 40. Is this another veiled attempt at a fourth bite at the apple to get development up there? I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. I wish you'd return the grant. I think the people have spoken. Now, I think we should remember the old Roman saying that we stood the test of time. It's vox populi, vox dii. The voice of the people is the voice of God. So select people, get on the right side of history, get on the right side of the residents, get on the right side of the voters, and recommend what Route 40 did for the Route 40 area, Route 40 Committee did for the area. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Howdy. Eric Meekle speaking on behalf of the Board of Health. We had two objections with regard to Article 23, Section 195-150, Sections BBA and BB. Specifically, these are the ones that refer to putting high-density senior living close to the asphalt plant, and our concern was that putting at-risk population to live next to and not get away from, in general, we would have some concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Freitas, Precinct 4. I'll be quick. I know you have a long night. I just want to give a shout-out to everybody that was involved with Turnpike and Mill. I'm sure the residents really appreciate it, and I really want to give a great shout-out to the DPW. They did a great job. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kim Bennett. I'm from 25 Lovett Lane. I will spare you the details of my opinions because I've shared them over and over since the Route 40 proposal came about in August of 2018. In summary, I will simply say I agree with Jerry Hall. Thank you.
My name is Donald Van Dyne. I'm here as a member of the Planning Board but not representing the Planning Board tonight. I'm here to ask you not to recommend Article 23. This article creates "by right zoning overlay district" to promote and encourage affordable senior housing next door to an asphalt plant on Route 40. The idea of creating this kind of zoning in Chelmsford is noble and needed, but the citing of the overlay abutting an asphalt plant is egregious and disrespectful to all seniors in our community that wish to age in place. Zoning is meant to reflect the values of a community. Its purpose is to promote the health, the safety, morals, general welfare of a community. Article 23, to create senior housing abutting an asphalt plant, conflicts with all zoning best practices. It's implausible that any member of this board honestly feels that steering seniors to live next to an asphalt plant reflects who we are as a community. This Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., I will be asking my fellow Planning Board members to withdraw Article 23. Tonight, this board has the power to take the leadership role to protect our seniors and send a message to the Planning Board and all Chelmsford residents. You care about the welfare of our seniors. If there are any town meeting representatives or members of our community that wish to age in place watching tonight, I wish you, I ask you to call or email a Planning Board member or come to our meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. Tell the Planning Board this zoning overlay to create affordable senior housing next to an asphalt plant is offensive and does not represent who we are in Chelmsford. Again, I request this board tonight not to recommend Article 23. In closing, if you personally vote for some ungodly reason to recommend Article 23, please look straight into the camera, and for the record, tell members of our community and America why you want chairs seniors to live next door to an asphalt plant. Thank you.
Currently the chairman of the Route 40 Study Committee. I live at Scotty Hollow. What Donald said disappoints me greatly, and I know the Board of Selectmen is very much on board.
If I could make a motion, there's no reason why she'd be, she pointed me out. They've done this numerous times to all other committees. There's no reason to dog me.
Okay. I'll withdraw that. The members of the Selectmen that have been here for a while know that Route 40 and the asphalt plant have been fighting the air quality and the health risks of that asphalt plant, Route 40, for three, four years now. Thousands of residents in Westford and Chelmsford came out, they put up their own personal money, they got an attorney, and they fought in the courts of this state to try to stop that asphalt plant. And they did it on the grounds that the infants, the children that play outside, the adults, and the seniors that live in that area, Scotty Hollow has many of them, that have health issues. And the courts decided that there was no health risk to anybody, that all those people that live in that community and live in that area, all those thousands of people, if you went into any of the schools in Westford during those Selectman meetings and listened to them talk, to the asphalt plant people, to listen to those attorneys, to see the people standing outside the schools that couldn't get in, they didn't take this lightly. We didn't sit around and say, oh, it's not a problem for us to live there. We fought this. And the courts decided, the EPA decided, there's no health risk next to the asphalt plant. None of us are at risk, not the youngest of us or the oldest of us. So I don't think that having care, continuing care, I can't even say it anymore. You know, any kind of housing that might go there, any kind of hotels or restaurants that go there, we've been assured by the courts and we've been assured by the EPA, there's no health risk. It's not going to hurt any of the residents that are going to continue to live there. It's not going to hurt anyone in Westford that's there, near there, or the elementary school down the street, not the golf course at Nebnasset, and not the residents at Scotty Hollow on the other side of the ramps. So I urge you to vote in favor of Article 23. We've looked at all those studies. We've considered all those aspects. We've taken a great deal of time and effort to come up with a plan that works for our community, that works for the area, that works for the residents, and we think that we've done a very thorough job. Thank you.
Was there anybody else that would like to address the board tonight? Last call, seeing none. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we'll move on to committee vacancies.
Okay. As of today, we have the following vacancies. There's one vacancy on the Arts and Technology Education Fund, one vacancy on the CCA Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Center Village Master Plant Implementation Committee, one vacancy on a Commission on Dilt's Disabilities, two vacancies on a Community Action Program Committee, four vacancies on a Council on Aging. These are all associate member positions. The Cultural Council has several vacancies. They can have up to 21 members. There's two vacancies on the Energy Conservation Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, three vacancies on the Holiday Decorating Committee, two vacancies on the Middlesex Canal Commission. There's an opportunity for an alternate member position on the Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee. Parade Committee welcomes all applicants. There's one vacancy on the Permanent Building Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Board, five vacancies on the Public Celebrations Committee, three vacancies on the Sign Advisory Committee, two vacancies on the Skate Park Committee, and one vacancy on the Tree Committee. If you're interested in applying for a position on any of these committees, you can fill out an application online on the town's website or in the town manager's office.
Thank you, Pat. All right, so, let's see, item five, tonight, we have Class II Auto Dealer Change of Location for Edward Gukasov doing business at Broadway from 103 Tingsborough Road to 123 Princeton Street, currently Bill Smith Car Sales.
Yes, good evening, Selectmen. I applied for application to move my current dealer license from 103 Tingsborough Road to 123 Princeton Street. Just wanted to expand my business to a slightly larger scale. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Anybody have any questions for him?
There wasn't a lease agreement in the package because it's being drawn up contingent on this decision? Is that, was that my understanding from reading?
Yeah. I'm moving based, if I'll get the license, then I'll move to the new location.
Do we need that in the package or no?
No, I don't think so.
It's not required? Okay.
You have an agreement with Mr. St. Elia, do you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think, what, a 35, is it 35 or 45?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah. And what do you have now, about 12?
Nine.
Up there, were you at nine?
Yeah.
It's a good location, so.
I mean, I will say that we have a discussion. I did notice that the lot there was getting pretty light of cars, so I think I'd be happy to have someone that's going to use the lot and up right out of there. Your motion?
I make a motion to approve the Class II Auto Dealer License to Edward Gukasov doing business at, as Broadway, currently located at 103 Tingsborough Road to move to 123 Princeton Street. Is it 123 or 130?
123. 123.
123 Princeton Street.
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great night. Next up, we have a Class II Auto Dealer BS Motors, Inc. at 103 Tingsborough Road, currently Broadway.
This is a new license then.
It's a new license?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Selectmen, Attorney Brian O'Casey from the Law Offices of Kevin J. Murphy. I have an office at 1 Courthouse Lane in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. I'm here today with BS Motors, Inc. They're applying for a license to sell second-hand motor vehicles at 103 Tingsborough Road in Chelmsford. The principals of the organization are Sonia Quinn and Bruno Sales. Bruno has experience in the City of Lowell as a principal at Revolution Motors on Middlesex Street. He successfully run a business there. He and his partner are breaking up, and he is looking to, along with Sonia, to open a business at 103 Tingsborough Road. The license currently is nine cars. I've explained to him that historically, the town of Chelmsford is much stricter than the City of Lowell in the number of cars that are allowed on the lot, so he will have, he'll make sure there's only nine cars there, and Sonia will make sure there are only nine cars there. They've entered into a lease with Phil and Lynn Smith for the property, and they're asking that you approve this license.
So I noticed you don't have a Massachusetts driver's license.
No. Actually, I have it, but it's expired because I have my work permit, but since Trump changed a couple of regulations, it's taking much longer to renew it because they always give it for a year, but I already submit the application with my immigration attorney, so I should be getting my license between December. It could be up to March.
How about your partner? Does your partner help?
Yeah, she has.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Class II Auto Dealer's License for BS Motors to exercise on the premises at 103 Tingsborough Road.
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
With that, that brings us to a one-day all-alcohol beverage license for St. Martin's Seminarian Church at 180 Westford Road. Is there anybody here for them?
They don't come anymore.
Not coming.
It's actually three one-days.
Oh, yeah, three one-days. 11-2, 11-22, and 11-23, 2019. Good catch, Pat.
So I make a motion that we approve three one-day all-alcohol licenses for St. Martin's Church for November 2nd, November 22nd, and November 23rd, as presented.
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Brings us to the fall town meeting warrants. Do you want to run through them or do I?
No, we can just go through them in numerical order, I guess, if that's the case. Obviously, Article 1 is town report, so there's no motion or recommendation on Article 1. Article 2 is rescind the remaining unused borrowing, authorized by an issue borrowing for the forum. Finance can be recommended unanimously. Again, these articles at the beginning are more housekeeping articles.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 2.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Article 3 is rescinding unexpended appropriation for the Progress Avenue Sewer Pump Station. It was a balance of $93,200.64. From that project, finance can be recommended 7 to 0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 3.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Article 4 is the rescinding unexpended appropriations on the Community Preservation Fund. There were four completed projects, you know, all less than $15,000. Obviously, Community Preservation recommended that because that's how the article moves forward. Finance Committee also recommended 7-0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 4.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 5 is the cemetery improvements for the ongoing work at the cemetery project at Pine Ridge. $50,000 is for this next phase, and the Finance Committee recommended 7 to 0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 5.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article 6 is the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. That's the 10 cent per rider for those who ride the car share. The amount this year is $7,802.50. Again, we have to appropriate that in accordance with the provision. The Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 6.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 7 is the collective bargaining agreement. The only one that we have at this point is the Police Patrol Officers Union, the $215,000, which this board approved at a previous meeting. Finance Committee recommended 7 to 0, and then later this evening, you may have a second one, but let's keep it where we are right now, so 7-0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 7.
Second.
Paul, should I abstain from this one?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll abstain. So, motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0-1.
Article 8 is recommended no action. There's no changes to the current fiscal year operating budget. We'll probably see something more towards the spring. Article 9 is the Sewer Construction Stabilization Fund. This, again, this is the transfer of cash from the interest earnings that funds the debt service on the project. Finance Committee recommends 7-0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 9.
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 10 is for the South Row School Elementary, South Row Elementary School Roof. This is a $400,000 appropriation from free cash for the partial roof replacement. This will be done on the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program in which, upon the completion of the project, the community would get reimbursed approximately 50 percent. Finance Committee recommends 7-0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 10.
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 11 is the Fire Department Breathing Air Compressor Unit, $95,000 from free cash to replace the current unit that has passed its useful life. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 11.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 12 is a request for transfer of $80,000 from free cash for the purchase and installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at crosswalks adjacent to the public schools and the High Street intersection of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 12.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 13 is a request for a transfer from free cash in the amount of $250,000 for the purchase and installation of bituminous concrete top coat on the exterior surface area of the public works facility at 9 Alpha Road. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 13.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 14 is a transfer from free cash for the, of the amount of $550,242 for the resurfacing and installation of granite curbing for the remaining portion of the Chelmsford High School parking lot. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 14.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Article 15 would be no action. Article 16 would be no action. You then move on to Article 17, which is the beginning of Community Preservation Fund. This would be a transfer of $214,200 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the relocation, reconstruction, and enhancement of ball fields located at Roberts Field. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
Did the community?
Preservation recommended. That's why, it can't, an article cannot get to the town meeting or acted upon by town meeting unless the Community Preservation Committee recommends action.
Okay. Was it unanimous, do you know?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, yes, it was. Yes, yeah, there, oh, wow, I go into here. Wow.
She's hiding back there.
Well, let's finish up everything after Roberts Field.
It's sort of Phase 2. There's still some additional work. There'll also be the exterior walking track, which is part of the state appropriation in the budget, but there are still some work, I think, over by the ice rink and the pond.
The big numbers are done.
The big numbers are done, though. Yeah.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 17.
Second.
Your motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Article 18 is Community Preservation Transfer of $60,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the planning and design of a pedestrian bridge across Beaver Brook in the town center. Finance Committee recommended 7-0.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 18.
Second.
We motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Article 19 is a transfer of $100,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the creation of a facade improvement program for buildings located in the town center and/or Vinyl Square. Finance Committee vote was 4 to 3 in favor.
Again, on the Community Preservation, was, the vote was unanimous?
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 19.
Second.
So before we vote on this, just a quick sort of question to whoever, Paul may be. If this comes back that it's not legal, because I think there was some question at the Finance Commission Committee meeting whether there was precedence for this. So if the state does rule this, not allowed.
Then it's invalid, but this has been reviewed by town council and by CPC, and it was noted at the Finance Committee meeting, you know, they brought in, you know, officials from the Community Preservation Committee and so forth to discuss this, and we believe it is a legal appropriation by the town.
And the CPC does have a process that goes through, so it does vet all the projects, and there is a very specific process that goes through.
The Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation.
Yeah, I mean, it's a process, so. Yeah, I mean, like, it's a process, so.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Ahead of us there, Ken.
Sorry.
Kirkball. Article Twenty is a sewer capital project. It's a transfer of $565,500 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, free cash for the following sewer capital projects. Lord Road Sewer Pump Station Building and Generator Replacement, $220,000. Vincent Road Sewer Pump Station Building and Generator Replacement, $200,000. Weed Street Sewer Pump Station Control Panel and Generator Replacement, $120,500. And Mylan Avenue Sewer Pump Station Engineering and Design for an upgrade of $25,000. Finance Committee recommended seven to zero.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-one is a charter amendment to change the name of the Board of Selectment to Select Board. Finance Committee recommended four to three on this.
Ironically, it was, I think, two of the women that disagreed with it.
Yes, exactly.
I'm going to have to go watch that meeting.
Yeah, it was interesting.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we recommend.
I think the concern was, are we spending all kinds of energy to make this clerical change? And I think the ultimate response was no. It's kind of like going into Word documents.
Find and replace? Yeah, no, I was paid two years to do that. It's a very quick process. Like, it's five minutes, yeah.
So let's not spend all night. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty-one.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Four to one? No, no, it's four to one, yeah, okay. Article Twenty-two is, we begin the first of the zoning articles. Article Forty-two is a zoning bylaw, Twenty-two, zoning bylaw amendment regarding Route Forty, Groton Road. Finance Committee recommended six to one.
And the Planning Board has not voted on this?
They did.
They did. What was the Planning Board?
I think it was six, one.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty-two.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Article Twenty-three is zoning articles submitted by the Planning Board for the adoption of the Community Care, Community, Continuing Care Community Overlay District. The Finance Committee voted six, zero, one with one, obviously one abstention in favor of Article Twenty-three.
This seems to be an article, there's a lot of discussion, and I was interested this evening to hear about the Board of Health concerns and other concerns, and also the fact that one member of the Planning Board is intending to ask the Planning Board to withdraw this article. I wonder if everybody would be amenable to waiting to vote on this until we find out how those aspects of this play out.
Well, the point, the point of having these is two separate things, was so that the Continuing Care Community Overlay District could be applied to other areas in town as applicable. So this is its own thing. You were just voting to approve a flexible overlay district that can be applied according to Planning Board decisions. So it's an entirely separate thing.
Yeah, but what Don is saying is that he's asking them to remove Twenty-three, or to pull it back. It may not even be on the town warrant.
So.
Pat's saying is, can we wait for them to see this Wednesday, the Planning Board, if they pull it off, we don't even have to vote on it.
But, so what I'm confused is, because this is meant to be, as I understood it, just the creation of another overlay that we can use and pull out of a toolkit to say, well, what would, what would work? And so this would be, this is a set of parameters to create a continuing care community.
But it does specify which lots it applies to.
Yes, so the Article Twenty-two and Twenty-three go together.
Yes.
Okay, so the first step is to pull the IA to the street. And the second is to allow an option for the CCOD overlay. It provides another option. You could still choose to just use the underlying IA zoning under which you can do all kinds of things. I would just like to point out that the committee did talk about housing near an asphalt plant. There was discussion about the air quality and the fact that we were told there were no air quality concerns, as one of the speakers during open session said. There was discussion about modern construction techniques, window techniques for things like noise. And there was also a look done, a cursory look done at the 110 asphalt plant where there are 500 condos within a half a mile of that plant. And those condos are selling at full market rate. They're on the market for 30-plus days. The other thing I'd just like to say is in, so we all know what happened at the public hearings in August of last year. When the committee went to pre-brief the Planning Board to give an in-process look, I think it was the February-March timeframe, and some folks started talking at the podium at that point during that meeting, Mr. Van Dyne suggested moving it forward to Springtown Meeting and calling that meeting a public hearing, and let's go forward. Then we had July where the EDC went to the Planning Board with a letter trying to discredit the community, the committee, because there were residents on it. And if you go back and review the intent of the committee and what the Planning Board wanted on that committee in terms of the demographics, it was exactly what they said they wanted to do during those public hearings. And then in September, the EDC came forward with a different argument to the Finance Committee about having the grant and needing to wait for the grant. And now we have yet another argument about housing near an asphalt plant. So I'm just, I'm concerned about all the inconsistencies. I think the committee did what they were intending to do, and like I said, this is giving an option. There's not going to be a lot of movement up there in the near term. So if some other alternative comes along out of some of these other thought processes, then so be it. But there was nine months of thought, a lot of stakeholder input over those nine months that went into this. And so I just, I don't think it's as, I think it's a lot more well thought out than it's being characterized by some, so I'll just leave it at that.
So what I'm wondering, Virginia, is if the Planning Board on Wednesday night decides to pull the warrant article, we don't need to vote on it tonight. So are you, are you asking that we vote on it tonight regardless of what happens for Wednesday night?
So. The Planning Board already voted six to one, and this is on their agenda in new business. It's not like a.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what you want to say.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm fine with voting on it tonight, but.
I mean, so if they pull it, they pull it. I mean, as it stands.
I don't think it's going to change my mind, I guess.
I just need to know what you want to do tonight, that's all.
If it's going to, if that's going to influence your thought process, then, it's not going to influence my thought process. But if it's going to influence people's thought processes, we should consider that. If it's not, then we have, we vote, we have the vote in place.
I think the committee's done a great job, by the way, so, and they have had a six to one vote. But he, there is going to be a motion to, for the board to withdraw the article, so. Are we still having our meeting? We have an annual meeting like, you know, a meeting like we have.
At this point, there's no meeting scheduled for the night of town meeting, if the board wishes to call one, but at this point, I have no reason to call, I have no, no agenda at this point.
Because, I mean, we don't have another meeting before that, right?
No, no. Two weeks from tonight is town meeting, and next Monday night's Columbus Day.
The other thing is, is that there was ample time at every single Route Forty meeting for public input.
Yeah, I don't deny any of that. I just need to know, do you want to vote tonight or not? Because we may not need to, we could vote on it tonight, and then Wednesday night, if they do pull it, it's useless if.
How much time have we spent discussing whether or not to vote on it, when we could just vote on it as-is and if it could pull to get a vote?
Because Pat made a suggestion that we delay the vote.
I just, I mean, like, I just, I just wonder what the.
And I respect that. I just, it's not going to affect me.
Purpose of rehashing this is.
I don't think it's going to affect me either, but I don't think there's a problem waiting to the, waiting for that evening, if, unless, we don't want to have a meeting that night.
So, did you make a motion?
I did not make a motion.
Okay.
So under your suggestion, we would meet right before town meeting to vote on this article?
Yeah. Can I make a motion to just vote on it now?
Recommend motion.
And vote, vote in favor. I recommend a vote in favor.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second in favor of the article? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was that, George?
I said, I'm not going to vote against it. You know, I don't know. I mean, that puts us in a difficult position. I mean, I, I'm not against the.
You would prefer to wait?
I would, personally.
That's fine. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Then everybody's happy. I mean, then the Planning Board's got, you know, if, if they've, you know, I don't think it's going to change, but that's my opinion.
The only thing I will say is, I'm not an expert in Planning Board issues.
You know something? That's a surprise to me.
My wife has trained, trained me to say I'm wrong. I know when I'm not right.
You're too modest.
Yeah. So anyways, I mean, I would like to hear what they have to say. I mean, if you force me to vote, I can vote tonight, but.
That's fine.
So, we're going to wait?
Motion and a second? It's right there. Are we voting?
No, no.
We're waiting?
So three of us would prefer to wait, so.
All right, that's fine.
That's fine.
Fair enough.
All right, so I'll post a meeting for the 21st of October at 6:30.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
This is the only thing on the agenda.
Let's postpone anymore.
All right, all right, okay, all right, but, all right.
Seven thirty meeting, right? The town meeting starts at seven thirty?
Seven thirty, yeah.
We won't need more than five minutes. Ten minutes?
All right, moving right along.
Okay, Article Twenty-four is the zoning bylaw amendment to amend the Community Enhancement and Overlay District to allow multifamilies in the industrial areas. The Finance Committee voted seven to zero opposed to this article.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty-four. Well, we can have a discussion after the.
Yes.
Yeah, after a second.
Now a second discussion, all right?
I, I share some of the concerns that have been raised about whether this is something that we just want to do as a blanket for all IA. And I think that there's been some very, this was a very specific and conscious decision made in areas like Center Village and the Bayard. And my, my gut is that we still want those to be conscious decisions to allow multifamily and industrial zones. And I appreciate the Finance Committee's concern that this may actually dilute our focus on filling the commercial spaces because we're responding to a market that wants to build multifamily housing.
What was this financial?
Seven to nothing opposed the article, or recommend against the article.
Opposed it.
So I have, I have, I've heard, but my understanding is that if you are building in a formerly industrial area, you have to do soil tests. Like, you can't just plop a house down. This isn't, we have zoning regulations. We have, there are some states where there are no zoning regulations, and nobody tests for anything.
My, my comment wasn't about soil testing.
But I, so that's one of the issues that has been brought up. With regards to the Planning Board's concern, you know, everything I've heard from cities that have had, and towns that have, that have been able to revitalize, you need people before commercial. Like, you have to have people living in a walkable community with good transportation access and accessible sidewalks and functioning streets, complete streets, and sensibly laid out parking, and sensible development. And then commercial comes in after the housing. And that is the way that large towns and small cities have turned around from the workshops I've attended. So I will go back and review that Finance Committee meeting to see what the arguments were. But I, the, my understanding is that you do housing, and then commerce follows. And so long as it's a walkable area where you have complete streets with sidewalks and even bike lanes, and, you know, traffic lights, crosswalks, complete streets, so we are looking for a livable community where people can actually live their whole lives and stay here and survive. This is, this is where, this is where the commerce comes in, and otherwise, you're just building a mall.
Paul, did the Planning Board vote on this?
Yeah, yeah, the Planning Board submitted the article.
Oh, so they're obviously in favor.
Yes.
It wasn't unanimous.
It was not unanimous.
What was the vote for Planning Board?
I recall. Evan's escaped, yeah.
Should have screamed.
Don't go with him.
You want to put that one up to the same night, or what do you want to?
Why?
Yeah.
We're not going to have any more information, unless you want to do more homework.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, the only reason I say we put off is if Emily has to do more homework, but I'm, I'm ready to vote, you know.
No, I will vote on this, and I can do homework on the side if I, you know, don't find a job between now and then.
Do you want someone from the Planning Board to add anything?
We have Planning Board members here. If someone would like to speak to it, if we would like a perspective, but.
I mean, I'm good, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy. All right.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Article Twenty-five is a zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to pre-existing non-conforming residential lots. Finance Committee voted six to one in favor of Article Twenty-five.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty-five.
I am torn on this one.
I'll second for discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so a motion, a second, discussion. I'll help you along a little bit. I mean, the idea behind this was that, for instance, where I live, if I wanted to put on a porch because of, I have less than a quarter acre lot, I have to go to ZBA.
Right.
So there's a lot of those applications that end up in front of ZBA that just chew up a ton of time, so this would allow me to have more leeway, and it would free up, I don't know, like eighty percent of the applications going to ZBA.
Right, because, because so many, isn't it like eighty-three percent of the, the lots are smaller, and therefore, so, so, yeah, so, right.
I just don't know if there's like some factor.
You're setback, you meet the same setback.
Yeah, setbacks and so forth, and.
Well, you can't make it more non-conforming without going to ZBA. It's only if there's the same amount of non-conforming.
Right. But what always worries me about this, again, not understanding zoning law, if there's some backdoor that's getting stuck in here that's going to allow someone to, you know, go to five feet of the property line all the way around and build some behemoth, you know, but.
No, it just applies to standards that were in place at the time of the construction.
Yeah, we're rolling them back to the date when they were constructed.
Aye.
Do we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-six is a zoning bylaw amendment that provides minor updates to the cluster open space development bylaw. The Finance Committee recommended seven to zero in favor of this article.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Twenty-six.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second.
I have a discussion point, please. So I, I absolutely support this concept and this idea. What I am really having trouble with is. What I am really having trouble with is the removal of this being by special permit. And now, now it's all by right. And I think there were reasons why it was put in place with special permit even at the ten acres, and I'm just concerned about taking away those checks and balances that the planning board had. And so, I, I don't, I don't like the language that makes it by right, I think it should still be by special permit, and if this were to get amended, to put the special permit back in, I would fully support it, but I don't support the language to make it by right.
I think you hit the nail on the head for me, so... Do we have a motion, a second, any more discussion?
That's the sort of thing that we have to wait to town meeting to propose an amendment?
Somebody could, somebody could propose an amendment on the town floor.
Alright, so something to keep in mind.
So, your motion is to approve?
Recommend approval.
So, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
And I just, I just want to remind folks that we are recommending that this go forward to town meeting.
No.
No.
What's your recommendation?
It's your recommendation for the article.
Recommended that a long time ago.
Yeah.
Well, no, you have no choice.
No, no, we recommend...
It is now.
The planning board spits an article on the warrant, it goes to town meeting. You have a recommendation whether you support or recommend against the article, which is advisory.
I mean, I agree with Virginia on an amendment that would make it...
So, as it's written, do we recommend this article, that's the question we're asking.
I'm going to go with no.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's two, all against?
Aye.
Sorry, so what?
We recommend against it.
Okay.
If it's amended, that's a different story.
Article twenty-seven is the zoning bylaw amendment regarding historic preservation and reuse. The summary is provided in there, the finance committee, after extensive deliberations, voted six to one on this article.
Sure.
Yes, six to one, it was a six to one vote by the finance committee. Yeah.
In favor?
Yes.
After extensive discussion.
You waiting for a motion?
Yep.
Sorry, did you make a motion?
I did not.
Okay, that's fine.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the article as is.
A second?
Is the second just to open it for discussion?
Sure.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'd like to see this moved to that meeting, so we can do some, you know, that's my only, I, I'd like to do a little bit more. I've had a couple of calls on it, and...
What are the concerns, George?
The concerns from the people were, what, that they may be just building too much of a, additional house, of, I guess it's, it could be more than a two-family, it could be like a three-family or a four-family or whatever. Is that, uh, is that the intent, is that the intent?
Three families. Three families.
Three families, okay, so...
I don't know if the same people were calling you, they were calling me, but yeah, you'd end up on some of these houses, like High Street, that the historical houses could be made into three families.
And I don't know if that would take away some of the historic, uh, you know, this, the look or whatever of the, uh, of the property, so, I mean, I, I...
I think it depends on how it's done, like, thinking about places I've lived where there have been converted units, I, I mean, you still have to...
So, the, the pre-existing non-conforming article is like grandfathering
Yeah.
lots in that are below today's current lot sizes. The biggest concern that I have heard with this one is the language that basically allows the proactive subdivision of lots, very small lots. And, and do we as a town want to keep doing that?
So, the lot is not less than fifteen thousand square feet?
Which is...
That's still a large lot. Like, that's, that's large.
In a town with one acre zoning?
I, I mean, I, I, one acre zoning doesn't make for, for walkable, complete streets with planned open housing, I mean, you know, I mean, if you want, if you want preserved, if you want to preserve open space and, and you want a livable, walkable community that works for all ages, and you want it to be age-friendly, smaller lots with sidewalks, I mean, I, there are plenty of family-friendly neighborhoods in, in towns with even higher property values that have smaller lots, I mean, I, so I, I think that, that where this says the lot contains not less than fifteen thousand square feet, like, that's still, that's almost double the eight thousand square feet that my lot is, that, that is, that is a substantial amount of land. And I think between mine and my two neighbors, that's two, four, five, five units on, on, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, because I've got two, two families next to me, like, it's, it's not, that's not, that's, that's a neighborhood, that's, that's a neighborhood.
The next step after that, you have three units with six people living in it, with six cars, and they complain that there's not enough parking, so they pave. Next thing you know, you have one of these beautiful old houses that's all asphalt all the way around it, maybe an outside fire escape that's metal, and you, you have the slow decline.
Is that a decline? It depends on how it's done.
I don't know, I guess how you look at it.
I mean, like, it depends on how it's done, I, I think that that, that is, uh...
We have one request to defer this, so...
So, let's deal with that first, should we defer it or not?
I don't have any objection to that.
I don't have any, I respect for George, I'll defer it.
That's the way I want it, that's what I'd like to do, I, you know, I like to be fair, because some of these things came up today, that...
Alright, so, do we need a motion to defer, or we're just?
No.
Okay. So, moving on, twenty-eight?
Article twenty-eight is a zoning bylaw amendment to eliminate the signed advisory. The, uh, obviously, it's supported by the planning board, it's supported by the Board of Appeals, and the finance committee recommended seven, zero in favor.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of Article twenty-eight.
One sec. I'll second. I was reading parking requirements for all of this.
Do we have a motion, a second, so discussion? And the reason why they're removing it is because this is now covered under...
Right, it's...
And, and we don't, we, it seems like we can't staff that...
We can't get a forum on the committee and most of the signed things from the planning board.
No, no, I get it, I get it, I was, I was highlighting stuff from Article twenty-seven.
So, we may have a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Any...
We have a motion in a second, so...
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five oh.
Article twenty-nine is zoning bylaw amendment, real lots, no action. That completes the zoning articles, you've got three articles remaining. Article thirty is a, a bylaw to, um, exempt real estate taxes for parents or slash guardians of deceased active service members. This is the provision that came out of the Valor Act last year. It's a state acceptance, local acceptance, the finance committee voted in favor, six, zero, one.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article thirty.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty-one is, um, again, adoption of a local option under, under Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, one forty, section one thirty-nine, paragraph C. This would waive the fee for a license for a dog that is owned by a person aged seventy or older. The finance committee voted four to three in favor of this article.
Despite the fact that this is a Massachusetts general law?
No, it's a local option.
Oh, okay, I get it, yeah, alright.
I wish we could limit it to one, one dog per person over seventy, but absent that, I recommend approval of Article thirty-one.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-two is the final article in the warrant. This is the general bylaw amendment regarding the prohibition of single-use plastic checkout bags. Recycling committee obviously is bringing this back again, essentially unchanged from a year ago, other than the revision of the dates. The finance committee recommended in favor, six to one.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of Article thirty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, do you, do you want to...
It's under a minute and a half.
Do you want to meet at six thirty, or seven on the, uh, why should I post that, meet at six forty-five, what time on the, uh, you have two articles?
Let's wait and see if we have anything else we need to vote on before then, because it's still possible, we might.
Okay, alrighty.
Alright, so that brings us to report and presentation, with that, we're going to kick it off with a presentation by the business development director.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Maroney, Director of Business Development, and I'm here to kind of follow up on information I provided in your packets about a new, exciting grant opportunity that we are referring to as the Business Amenity Incentive Grant. So, following on from last year's small business grant that we received from the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, this year, we received similar funds, but twice the amount of last year. So, very exciting opportunity for us to create some changes for the Chelmsford Crossroads at Route one twenty-nine. We've decided to use the allotment of funds, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant given to us in its entirety for business development, and in discussion, we've decided to use this as a focus on the crossroads as a way to entice a business amenity. We are, you know, still not seeing anything coming forward to provide conveniences for the businesses that are down there. We've been in conversation with the property owners, tenants, they are still looking for a restaurant, a publicly accessed restaurant and/or beverage service, so we, we discussed this, and we've been looking at the Marlboro program as a guide to see how that's been working for them, similar with Hudson as well, so we've created this program, Business Amenity Incentive Grant, and areas that are eligible are the, the overlay district, the Business Amenity Overlay District. So, in your packet is a call for proposals, cover letter that you'll see. There's also a advertising flyer on the next page, and then a real light-covered application process, because we're, again, looking at how other communities have been successful in this pursuit. We've decided to not create a lot of restrictions so that we can see what comes forward and for us to decide at the town's discretion, what we would like to try to execute to full completion, so the application really pretty much asks for a signed lease agreement with the property owner, and the intention of the grant is to pay for equipment and/or fit up costs, because those are the most cost-inhibitive things that are difficult when you're trying to set up a restaurant or a food or beverage amenity, so we're looking forward to kind of getting this program publicly announced out into the arena of the brokers and realtors that have been trying to get projects going on one twenty-nine. They're continually showing their properties and actively, um, you know, engaging with potential tenants, but still, we're, we're not getting to any, any finalized projects, so we're hoping that this might help bring attention and excitement and some services and conveniences for the businesses that are down there, and that may also create more business attraction.
So, Lisa, how would you disperse this, would it be, uh, would you be matching for a space within, or?
So, we, we've discussed that quite a bit, and, you know, it really comes full circle to the point that we didn't want to put out a lot of criteria and restrictions or guidelines so that we could decide that as it comes forward. We may get one application, we might get five. We don't want to turn anyone away, so depending on the, the credibility and strength of the, of the applicant, we may possibly allot the money to one project, or maybe decide on, maybe two projects would, would be able to happen if we, if we break the grant up a little bit, or maybe we can make some other connections with lenders or other, other possible funding sources that could help the grant go a little bit longer and further. But we, we've decided to just leave it very vague and open so that we can receive as much opportunity as we can get.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Lisa, congratulations first.
Thank you.
Did we learn anything from the previous grant program that we executed where, like, will, will we be able to maybe spend a smaller percentage on the administration so we can put more into the community? I know some people were concerned about that with the last go-around.
Right, right, yeah, we certainly learned a lot, we learned an awful lot, so, um, some of it we knew. There is a lot of time-consuming, lots of hand-holding with the smaller businesses, and what we found was that the requests for small increments were quite time-consuming for the, for the vetting process, so, you know, awarding two thousand, three thousand, it, it took an awful lot of time to, to actually, but it, it makes a big difference for the small businesses. They did come looking, you know, the applicants that weren't chosen, and some new applicants did come back looking for the program to happen again, but we really thought that it was time to try to create some type of incentive on one twenty-nine. To answer your question of could we do it without administrative support, some of what happened with using...
Just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting without support, I'm just wondering if they can find some efficiencies, having been through it.
Yep, I, yep, so, part of, and, and part of that is that they used the vetting process as the same application as a small business loan, so, you know, we're not, I'm not skilled in how to vet that out, you know, I can get lease agreements, we can look at longevity, we can look at impact, job creation, the diversity of business, their location, all of those types of things, and, you know, maybe we could have hobbled through it, we wouldn't have been able to do it as efficiently as the guide of what Frankie provided us from community network, teamwork, but, um, we could, we could do it on our own next time, but I think we've decided that we really need to get a, it's time to create a boost for interest in one twenty-nine, especially since we put so much effort into the website, the drone video, the marketing campaign, I've got, um, you know, people coming forward and brokers, and, and they're, you know, they're looking for what, what else we can do, and aside from starting to talk about consideration of other incentives, you know, I think this is the greatest opportunity that most of the businesses that have recently left are, are saying it's just much too inconvenient. Some of those empty spaces don't have cafeterias. They just have small kitchenettes, so, to have that service, to be able to fit up a restaurant for the public to use, as well as the whole community in the business park, would really be a big win for the crossroads.
So, are we giving up any of the hundred thousand? In the last grant, it was fifty thousand, but ten went to admin, we're keeping the whole hundred, right?
Yes, yes.
So, there's no admin on this one?
Correct. Right, so we'll be doing that at, you know, with the town manager's office, myself, Evan, Economic Development Commission, you know, we'll, we'll be more involved in, in the vetting, but we also have no idea what's coming, if we'll get one, or two, or none, or five, so by putting this program out now, we're, we're able to manage how we handle the response in the way that we want to, yeah.
So, I'm a little, you want to go, George? So, I'm a little, you want to go, George?
I was just going to ask, have you had many, you know, of the bigger, you know, larger restaurants, big-name restaurants and things, come into town and, and maybe they were, they didn't, they didn't go through with the plan because they can't purchase the land? I mean, is it mostly because they have to lease, or is it?
Most of it is, they don't like the vacancy rate that's out there right now. And so, if we could just make some, some baby steps towards, you know, if you put out a grant for a hundred thousand, it's not a lot of money, but it's, it's a good amount of money to get a project started, and it could be step one towards getting, you know, getting some momentum going, especially since the businesses are asking for conveniences, and we're not looking to put out a two-hundred-seat restaurant. But it really could help with fit-up, with, with some of what that, you know, the expense of getting a restaurant in, especially since the property owners are interested to, you know, modernize their buildings, and this could be one of those ways.
The property owner is willing to match any of that?
We don't know yet, you know, if there's an interest, then there starts a discussion for a lease agreement, maybe that will, maybe that will happen.
If they want, if they want to generate some more interest.
But remember, the, the type of project we want is not just to be able to serve three tenants in a, in a three-four floor building, we want not that, you know, we want something that's like a, a public...
Yes.
A public amenity where it could support after-hours and business hours. And that, you know, the daytime workforce on the crossroads is about seven thousand five hundred people come into that park. And, and most of the empty buildings are lacking amenities.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a catch-twenty-two.
Yeah.
So, one thing, as, Lisa, you know, and, you know, I've been pretty involved in talking with the business owners down there, and doing the site tours, and sitting through all these committee meetings, and listening to everything, all the input. You know, we, if you, if you do take the time and drive the back roads, if you drive up off of Elizabeth and Alpha and Omni and all of those, you'll notice that a lot of those buildings back there are full.
Mm-hmm, yes.
They've, they've chopped up a lot of the bigger spaces and filled them up with a lot of smaller units. What we're left with are these gigantic units that are on the main strips. When you drive one-twenty-nine, you're like, oh, this place is empty, but you're not really seeing the whole story, unless you actually take time to slowly drive during the daylight through and seeing a lot of foot traffic and a lot of full parking lots in the back.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot to celebrate, there's a lot of potential. There's, you know, we've got some very important businesses here that are providing great jobs, and the diversity of businesses is, is very good as well. We're not all stacked up on, on manufacturing or communications. It's, it's a lot of important stuff happening out there in the crossroads. It's just, unfortunately, of the vacancies, it's all in five buildings, and three of them are all in a row in the, in the first, you know, visible stretch.
And we really threw, you know, a bone at it by saying, we'll even allow drive-throughs down here. We thought we had a pretty live fish in the line that really has been quiet now.
It's quiet, but if you notice, they're doing a lot of demo on the exterior and interior, so.
I've been checking, they've been pulling permits.
Yeah, there's, there's something happening, it's just not time to share it forward publicly yet. But there, there's something, you know, worth working on, it was just what they're doing. So, we're trying to do all our part, and they're very pleased, very much so, with what the town's been doing in, in supporting economic, you know, stimulation out there. And I think this grant, hopefully, could be the tipping point, I'm, I'm pretty excited to get it going.
So, well, where I'm going with it, and what I'm wondering is, in talking with restaurant owners in particular, whether they're breweries, or pubs, or, their big concern is coming to these buildings and not having the right drain system, drainage systems, and water coming in and so forth, and being able to make sure they get the right grease traps. And that's, it's all, you know, you have these solid concrete floors, you got to jackhammer them up, you got to do all this work, it's very expensive.
Huge hassle.
Huge hassle.
Huge hassle.
And that's, you know, where we sort of hit that roadblock. And so, what I'm wondering is, and not really a question for you, but, I mean, is there any discussion about the town matching any of this, or give a matching tip? Because this is for the business, right?
So, again, we're leaving...
This is for the person opening the restaurant.
But that's, that's why I was wondering, too.
This grant is towards who is footing the bill for the fit-up. So, if it's a negotiation in the lease, and there's give and take, you know, if, if the landlord is picking up a piece, the tenant is, is picking up a piece, we're looking at the bigger picture of what the impact is and, and, you know, where the, where the deal-breaker point is, and that's why we leave it flexible, where we can be involved to decide, because there may be three projects.
A lot of these discussions, even though we've, you know, just off the cuff with some of these business owners are, I don't want to put more money into my building. So, what I'm wondering is, has that discussion even come up of, maybe we match it with some sort of a TIF, or we match it with some...
But the TIF only applies to improvements of the current bag.
The challenge, yeah.
It would just be the upside of it.
Although, you know...
You still get the taxes on the base.
Right.
It's just the improvements, too.
But, but knowing what it takes to put brewery drains in, like, it's, it's sometimes worth even just creating another step in the concrete, just to lay the pipe in new concrete, because it's a solid muscle.
But, but it would have to be the incremental assessed value of the building, and I'm not so sure that type of work is going to significantly move the needle in terms of the assessed value of the building. But yes, we would, we would look, I mean, yeah, yes, we're open to it.
That actually works in our favor even better than.
It does.
You're still collecting the same base taxes, but when they hear TIF, they go, oh, wow.
Well, the eligibility of the improvement is not just drains, it's how you move the, the added new value, the new capital improvement to the building. So, that really depends on the market, the other available buildings. It doesn't necessarily instantly start ticking it up because they put in great drains.
No, I agree with that, but anybody that goes in and renovates and puts in a, you know, a go-to location, I mean, if it was a Capital Grill, you walk into that, and from what it is now to Capital Grill, that's a substantial upgrade.
It's a great discussion, you know, this is why we're kind of encouraging open applications, so that we can see on our side what we can influence to get projects done here.
That's why I wonder, too, you know, if we have larger landlords, like, do you want your building filled, like?
Well, some of them don't, well, some of them aren't, we do have large landlords in some of those cases, and they're looking at and saying, well, as long as we get the second-floor corner office rented, and we're getting our seven percent return on the money when we originally bought it twenty years ago, we're not going to do anything to the building. So, you end up with this stale.
I think a lot of people are also thinking about how the Boston suburbs are being so oppressed with the cost of doing business in that area for, for transportation and life science and cost of living and all of that, and they're all waiting for it to kind of force its way out this way. But, you know, our buildings have just been empty a little bit too long.
On a side note, I also noticed in the paper today, there was an article about the bus system that goes from Lowell down to Burlington to bring laborers down. Is there a stop, could, could a stop be arranged in Chelmsford?
Again, I, we can do an SCLRTA, so we can bring that up.
We've discussed it.
Yeah, okay.
We've discussed it, yeah.
Anyways.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
And Mike, traffic.
What I've provided you, Mr. Chairman, is just a brief update on what we've been doing with the Traffic and Safety Committee. As you know, at the last meeting, the Board had inquired about the cost of sidewalks in the Ledge Road and Dunstable Road area. Assistant DPW Director Stephen Yonley, who's here this evening, did provide a cost estimate, which is attached to the memo. It's currently up on the screen. He estimated approximately two hundred thousand dollars to do the sidewalks on Ledge Road up towards number fifty Ledge Road, and then if the Board was also inclined to do some of the sidewalks on Dunstable Road heading down towards Dunshire, that would be an additional, approximately, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'm sure if you had specific questions, he'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have specific questions, but to me, if you are willing to put two hundred into a park for kids to play, I don't understand why we couldn't do two hundred towards a sidewalk to keep kids safe when the buses are coming, but that's my quick thoughts.
Well, because the, and not to be a devil's advocate, but a park serves the entire community, where children across the community can play in a park, you're providing a twenty thousand dollar sidewalk for one road in town, and the list of roads in towns who are requesting sidewalks, you know, which is considerable. Now, obviously, their situation is unique, but we're looking at the situations out there, and as you can tell, at every turn, we seem to get bad news, including the news that came before the meeting this evening regarding the state parcel of land not being a bylaw option as an alternative. So, the question is, is, do you want us to be planning, you know, for next construction season to install a sidewalk on Ledge Road? And if the answer is yes, well, then which side of Ledge Road do you want it on, because either...
This is only one side?
Only one side, because either side's going to require some takings of, you know, which means we'll be going to town meeting, probably an April town meeting, to obtain the approval for the easements and takings. So, we're just trying to get a sense of direction. Again, we don't need an answer this evening, but we wanted to come back with additional information that you're talking two hundred thousand dollars for a sidewalk on one side of the road. And if you go beyond that, then, then, as you said, if you start going into Dunstable Road, and if you're heading towards Tingsborough, we, we really can't spend Chelmsford money on putting a sidewalk in Tingsborough.
Oh, fair enough.
There's a dip in Dunstable Road that crosses through Tingsborough, so they, they...
It's really small.
But we can't expend our monies on that, so we would have to reach out and see what we can do.
And then you still have the concerns on Swain Road and so forth, so, again, we're just trying to give you a holistic view of... We're not saying do it, not do it, we're just trying to tell you that, you know, if, if the Board's, you know, direction is get a sidewalk in out there, we'll get it in out there, and we'll come back to Springtown meeting with the easements and takings authorization, and then try to get it done next construction season.
When you say easement and taking, I mean, the front of everybody's...
The road right-of-way is not sufficient to install a sidewalk and have sufficient two-lane traffic up and down Ledge Road.
But the, the front, the front of a property is, is usually like a built-in easement for things like electrical, right?
We have plans, we have, I'll let Steve speak to it, we have plans for Ledge Road layout.
Because, because my understanding was always like, if your property runs to the street, it's not really, like, there. There's always the possibility for public works.
Hi, good evening, Steve Yonley, Assistant Public Works Director. I'm just to that, I have a little bit of experience up Ledge Road area from back in the nineties when I was working privately. And just because the layout's forty feet and the road is twenty-four feet, it's not in the center of the layout, it's all over. That road is all over pavement-wise. So, where I might have, on this side, I could have ten, twelve feet from the edge of pavement to where the town owns to, to the edge of the right-of-way. On this side, I might have a foot or two feet. So, part of my estimate that I put together was, you know, a survey for that, because we would need a survey to then prepare easement plans, because to be consistent and come up one side of the road and maintain a twenty-four, four to twenty-two-foot wide road, whatever, whatever we deem, and then have a five-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk, I'm going to have easement takings up that whole length of that road, I would almost guarantee, whichever side is determined to put the sidewalk on. And then to speak to the Dunstable Road thing, if you're familiar with Dunstable Road, I think it was back in two thousand and seven, maybe, or two thousand and six, or maybe even earlier than that, we installed sidewalk from Vinyl Square up to the Dunshire Road intersection, Swain Road on Dunstable. So, I kind of priced coming back from ledge down to connect into that sidewalk. The problem is, as Paul alluded to, about thirteen hundred lineal feet of that is in Tingsborough, because the town line right after Mission Road kind of does so, we can't, you know, we'll have a gap, you know, in the sidewalk unless we ask Tingsborough to, you know, we come up with some kind of agreement. So, you know, it's just a, it's a wrench in the works up there a little bit.
What if you use the other side of the road, Steve?
What's that?
What if you use the other side of the road?
It's all in Tingsborough.
Even the other side of Dunstable Road, both sides of Dunstable Road?
Right after Mission Road, it kind of, the town line kind of cuts over and cuts back.
Fifteen hundred feet in Tingsborough?
It's, it's about thirteen hundred.
And what is the cost that we're paying per foot? I'm just wondering what it would cost Tingsborough to pave that.
Well, I don't know, the pricing I put together was based on our unit pricing, our annual bid pricing for curb and sidewalk, I don't know what, how Tingsborough would do.
How many, how many feet is the, is Ledge Road?
Oh, Ledge, nineteen hundred and fifty.
It's almost a thousand.
So, it'd be about a hundred and fifty grand at that, roughly, about.
Yep, and again, on Ledge, I'm going right up to, just across from House number fifty, which is right about the fork at that little low-kill road, because that's the end of the town layout, we don't own any further.
Okay. Does anybody want to give Paul any guidance on that, or do you want to sit on it?
Again, we'll be coming in next month, at next meeting, with an update on traffic in general.
Is that your only other?
No, we've got a couple other items.
No, no, one of the other things that I want to discuss and make the Board aware of is what the Board's, the, excuse me, the Traffic Safety Committee is thinking about for improvements along North Road and in the center. And just to remind folks, the committee consists of the manager, myself, I'm DPW Director, his assistant, Chiefs Ryan and Spinney, and Lieutenant Spence also comes along. So, when looking at how to improve the flow of traffic in the morning, and also to avoid any possible collisions, there was discussion about the traffic light, as you are headed westbound, coming off of one-twenty-nine headed towards the Unitarian Church, you can take a left onto Route one-ten and head westbound. Right now, there's a green arrow. The thought was, by making that yellow arrow, it would force people to stop and think before proceeding directly through that intersection, where we have people right now, see the green...
It's a green arrow that goes as solid green.
But you're supposed to yield.
The sign says yield on green, but it's not noted.
I'm having a hard time, where are we turning left?
If you're going, if you're leaving here, go, go across the center, and you want to go left towards Brickhouse, Bertucci's.
Yeah.
It's Littleton Road, that traffic signal is your, is, once you're past the Christmas tree, and you're going to go left on Littleton Road, the light goes green, and then after, a green arrow as well, and then after a while, the green arrow goes out, and the sign says yield on green. What happens is cars see the green light, and they keep going left towards Littleton Road. You have cars coming the other direction from North Road that are crossing them in traffic, and then the horns start going, and it's a danger. So, the thought is to adopt the new state convention of the flashing yellow for the left-hand turn, that you often see now utilized on a lot of areas.
Do we have to ask the state for that?
No, we, it's now the new standard in Massachusetts, that obviously came after the installation of lights there. So, the thought would be, the light would go green, and then it would, you know, green arrow, and then after the green arrow, go the flashing yellow arrow, which is what you often see on left-hand turns. And therefore, the people then who have to go left on Littleton would have to stop, and could not go in front of the cars that are coming the other way on North Road.
Makes sense.
Sort of makes, it makes it safer. That's, that's one, one aspect of improvement there.
And so, the other aspect of the improvements would be on North Road heading south to the center. So, if you were coming from Drumhill, coming into the center, there seems to be a bottleneck right as you get to the flagpole, the traffic that is exiting Westford Street, trying to come in and merge into North Road right at the flagpole. Oftentimes, in the morning, the cars are trying to merge in, and they block the flow of traffic, trying to get through the light off of North Road. More importantly is, if you have cars, and this quite frequently, cars that do this, they're trying to get across two lanes on North Road to take the left-hand turn to proceed either across on one-twenty-nine or turn left onto Chelmsford Street. So, in discussing this, the committee's thought was, we will try blocking off Westford Street right as you get to the common, and that would force the traffic to go down Academy Street to the light that is there, and then they could integrate, they could take the left, or they could get in the appropriate turn lane to come through North Road into the center, and that should improve the flow of traffic, rather than stop the cars that are flowing forward, and it would make it much better. So, that's something that we're looking to implement by cordoning off that section of Westford Street, see how it works.
So, Mike?
No, because what happens is, if you see, and I do it regularly, if you're in the morning, the light turns green, then you got the people looking at the ones on Westford Street, do I let them in, not let them in? The hesitation, then what happens is the light's not changing because nobody's moved, in addition to those who are trying to cover across a couple lanes. The thought would be to put the gate at night, near the flagpole, in a gate, not a permanent barrier, so, and then have signage up at the other end saying, not a thruway. So, that way, the church still has access for its parking and its services, so you're not going to block the roadway up by the monument, you're going to, you're going to install a gate, almost similar to what you see at the Highway Yard Gate at that end. And the reason not to make it permanent is, so if there are events in the commons, such as the Fourth of Georgia, Country Fair, or the, the Holiday Prager, where you're running horses and so forth, you can open up the roadway to traffic, as opposed to, you know, a permanent closure and Jersey barriers and so forth. So, that's, that's the notion with...
Could it be something prettier than just a swinging silver pole?
Yeah, but something, yeah, something, yeah, I mean, but you get the idea, not a permanent, not a permanent, right.
Swirls.
Right, but, but you know what I'm saying, not a permanent closure of, a physical closure of the road, because, again, you would, you'd lose something in terms of the Country Fair or the Holiday Prager.
You still would be able to get in, you'd like to park to go to the common.
Go to the church and the Father's Cemetery.
Exactly, but you wouldn't have an outlet, you'd have to go back.
Yep, turn around, yeah.
Exactly, so that, that's another consideration. And we know that's a big deal, so we're not expecting a vote this evening, but we wanted to air that out, you know, to the Board and the community to get feedback and thoughts, and eventually a vote from the Board, as, since you're the traffic, you know, ultimately, traffic commissioners of the community.
One thing I would just consider, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I drive that pattern a lot. And when you're coming, I come down from Westford Street, so when you're coming down that way... down that way, there's probably 50% of the cars that peel off to the right by the Unitarian Church to cross those two lanes of traffic for people who are letting drivers in, and the other 50% go down Academy. And if you're going to now steer all the traffic down Academy, I don't know if you should, if, if we, you would need to look at like the timing of the traffic light and things, because the traffic's just going to be gridlocked all the way up Westford Street. And even now, like if I choose to go to Academy, sometimes I'm sitting at the light because the people on North Road are blocking, it's like the timing of everything is just off, you can't even get out at the traffic light at Academy, so-
Right, and that's one of the reasons of improving it a bit further up, because of hesitancy.
I would just-
And as we phase this in, because we have all these partners, we would encourage that people obviously obey the lights, but we would utilize the police to get out there and do enforcement, and ensure that people aren't blocking the intersection.
Okay.
Because it would be a transition period.
I would assume that there are models, like you could, is there like a computer modeling system where you could run light cycles to make sure, like how do, how do light cycles get determined?
I've seen it done in studies of some of the outside consultants, I don't know if we have software in-house or not.
You also have sensors, the other, I mean, you know, your expensive communities have people monitoring the traffic and adjusting the signals, we're not talking that, but yes, there are, there are models to do that with, how traffic counts as well as sensors.
We don't have those type of models.
No, no.
No, I just, I don't know, I feel like this is like one of those automated things, like there should be a computer program that would let you like-
That's how they do it, that's how Boston's now done in some of the, you know, suburbs of Boston, they're all interrelated, interconnected for traffic flow.
Two other sort of points there, and I'll take the simpler one first. I noticed that they, in front of Blake, that island, they put in the two handicap ramps for the sidewalk in each end of the island, and then this week, they filled in between with loam and seeded it. So now you've got these two ramps to go up to a sidewalk that's now loam. Any idea what the state's going to do there?
I haven't seen that one, no, we do know-
I just went by this morning, and they were spraying it, I'm like-
Well, we do know the state's, you know, basically going to be completed by next spring, most of it construction this fall. Next spring, we, we will come in and close off that portion of Warden Street and make it a T-intersection. Were you talking before that?
On the island itself, in front of that beautiful old pine tree-
Yeah.
They put a cement handicap ramps on each side of the island-
Yeah.
And then they put loam in between the two ramps and seeded it, so just wondering what they're doing there.
I don't know.
They should probably be cement connecting it.
Yeah.
And then the other one is, back to the traffic, as you're coming by Fishbones at the end of the day, taking a left on Route 4 North, people all day long will pull three deep into that intersection, and then the lights turn, and the people coming the other way can't even move until those three cars wait a light cycle to get through.
Right.
Can we put up some kind of signage to say, don't block intersection, or?
You want more signage in the center?
No.
We can, I mean, that's the problem.
Can you, can you put a, I don't know, put it out there for a week?
Put an officer out there ticketing people, that would stop that real quick, because you're not supposed to enter the intersection, you're not supposed to enter the intersection.
That's like, that's like a classic Worcester thing, like having lived there, yeah.
It's on Facebook, almost once a week, and I can-
Somebody sitting there like this, you know, filming, good luck.
I'll talk to the chief about it.
Thank you.
Which is a nice segue, the, the other thing that I put on this memo was an updated traffic enforcement memo from Chief Spinney, he wanted the year-to-date, he brought this to the last meeting, just showing the number of motor vehicle stops, citations, and accidents through this last year, recapping the North Chelmsford Traffic Action Plan, the number of deployments was a total of 50. He had only made three commercial vehicle stops for uncovered loads, there was 360 stops, which 120 tickets issued, and that was primarily for the Ledge, Dunstable, Swain, Groton Road, Main Street areas. He did specifically point out what had happened when we had the state police truck team that came up with the six troopers, that they had stopped 17 vehicles, and they had discovered 18 violations. And the last thing on, that I wanted to note about the committee, as you will recall, back in June 12th, we had the listening session, and we took in 67 different speakers or comments that evening. I've grouped those to approximately eight different categories, four are individual categories such as traffic enforcement, pedestrian issues, enforcement, and the other four are site-specific areas such as North Chelmsford, Turnpike and Mill, Littleton Road. And what I was going to ask the board is, if you want to pick another night, I can come in and we can kind of go through most of those issues in those areas one by one, what we've accomplished, and I can bring it in in either spreadsheets, or some graphic representation of, you know, what the percentage of issues are, where they're, where they're coming, rather than this evening, I didn't come in, I have a general overview of what we're doing, if you have some questions about those individual areas, but I'd be much happier to present to you almost on a one-by-one basis where the status of those issues are.
I have had some questions from the public, like, are we going to have a follow-up session, and then I've had people say to me, oh, you guys have done a great job, you don't need a follow-up session, so I think what we should do is have you give us that overview to the, the board in completion, and then we can decide that night if there's a reason for having another public session where we have the public come in or not.
My suggestion, Mr. Chairman, would be a meeting sometime after the conclusion of town meeting, that way we get past that, and then I could come in and have a formal presentation with graphics.
Could we, could we set it up so that Mike's briefing the board, but that we have a public input segment on the agenda in case there's something, I mean, that might save you from having a separate public meeting, or would you rather just take a first pass through?
It's up to the board.
Might be a good idea that we get updated before the meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's judge it, well, we do a public session at that.
I mean, even if it's the same night, but you're right, I mean, we could do it, and then-
Yeah.
And, you know, we did have that session with the 67 speakers, of that, if Mike had to guess, and again, this is just a guess, maybe there were 28 topics. I know some were short-term, easy fix, some were midterm, some were long-term, and you had broken them out that way, and we can look at what's, if we're making progress, maybe we don't need to have a public meeting, but, yeah, we'll do it that night, and we'll have a, a public input afterwards, and we'll go from there. Yes?
Okay, so that'll be in your next meeting, November 4th, just so you know. Next regularly scheduled meeting.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Paul, you're up.
Yeah, just a few items under my report this evening. First one is that one of the boards to be formally aware, you've obviously been notified already, but to notify the community that a proposal for the redevelopment of the Oddfellows Building parcel, I guess the best way to describe it, here in the, in the Historic Center, is scheduled for Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM at the Police Station Training Room. It'd be a joint, the meeting will be hosted by joint boards, meaning the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, and the Historic District Commission. Obviously, members of the Board of Select will be there, we expect EDC and the public, and that is, is regarding the redevelopment of that parcels. The property includes the rehabilitation and of the Oddfellows Hall, subject to determination of structural sufficiency, they're proposing a first-floor restaurant and upper-floor residential rental units at that site. In addition, the plan is to rehabilitate the Fisk House, and also the plans include the construction of new residential to the rear of the property, the portion that's probably more commonly identified as a municipal parking area by the brook. Obviously, the Santanda Bank branch would remain, also, they've, they've extended a lease there, so it's a major redevelopment consideration in the center. Again, that, the meeting will be Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM, it will be covered by Chelmsford Telemedia at, at the Police Station at 7:00 PM. So that's significant. Also, related to the center, the proposal for Nine Actin Road, which is the conversion of that commercial building to residential, that hearing has been postponed, and I believe will be scheduled at the end of October at the Planning Board meeting, that will be following that, so that would be on the 29th. So again, major considerations in Chelmsford Center coming up. Next item, yes?
Was, am I remembering correctly that there are some funds set aside by the state legislature for Chelmsford Center redevelopment, and if work starts on Oddfellows, that would be released? Am I remembering that correctly?
No, there's funding that's been authorized but not appropriated for the Brookwalk, the $5 million, you know, grant authorization.
Glad to last governor.
Right, no, it's the current government, the current administration, it's still active, that the hope may be that, given if these projects move forward, that they may be an opportunity to, to address the governor and say, look, this is an, an investment of significant millions of dollars, a private investment in housing, in a urban, you know, urbanized area, i.e. the smart growth, the pedestrian walking, all, you know, all the things of, you know, transit lines and so forth, and if there's ever any opportunity that the, that funds may be released, a portion or all of it, that would be the opportunity.
Right.
So yes, that's, that's on people's mind.
We do have money to bury the next section of the lines underground.
Right, we have portion, well, the, the work still hasn't been confirmed on Cushing Place, to then go beyond that, to go through the center to, you know, to ultimately, you know, towards the library area, that would take us reaching an agreement with National Grid and Verizon to initiate the next phase of the underground utility project.
But developers could put towards that if asked correctly, like-
Yeah, but the, the numbers are significant.
No, I know.
Yeah.
You're going to run through a lot of water there, I mean-
Yeah, and, and the main part is-
For the bridge.
Right, the, the issue with Verizon is, is they, they're, those are major trunk lines that have to go underneath the, the brook, you know, down, you know, towards, towards Bedford, that's a major project. But again, we're, we're in the black in terms of the account, so there's really no technical reason why they shouldn't advance it. The National Grid issue is, there's plenty of money in the National Grid account, it's just getting their authorization to utilize some of those monies for the joint work that would be done out there. So again, once we get some clarity in terms of what's going on, you know, it's-
But it would be great while doing the Oddfellows Building to have this done.
Now's the opportunity to do it, it's, as I said, it's once in a lifetime, quite frankly, you know, what's out there, so if it's ever going to happen, it would happen now.
Your license.
So again, that's, that's coming up, you know, two major parcels in the center coming up in the next month, or later this month, as you're on the heels of the, of the occupancy of the Griss Mill, which basically all the units, which have been sold at this point.
Okay.
So, next item I have for you is the, the grinder-pump appeals policy, a formal grinder-pump appeals policy. It's, it's there in your packet, it's there, what, in speaking to Insurance Council on this matter, perhaps a way of resolving the, the outstanding issues regarding the grinder-pump situation would be to have this formalized appeals policy adopted, this has been reviewed by Insurance Council, and so I'd ask for your consideration and approval of that this evening.
This is a policy?
Yes.
So just like any other policy, do we have to put it on notice for a week, and then-
This is not a selectmen policy.
Not a selectmen policy, I'm just, I'm just looking for your-
Well, you know I'm for it.
Okay, all right, all right, I just, I just, I just want, it'd be helpful if the board were on record saying, yes, you know, we think that this is a positive step forward.
I just have one question, when I, so, so you, council did review it?
Yes.
Was there anything that came up about, if I look through the flow here, if they don't like what the superintendent said, they can go to the Director of the Department of Public Works, and the superintendent works for that director, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then if they don't like what the Director of the Department of Public Works said, they can go to you, and the-
Yes.
So it's, it's all up this chain of command, and was there, were there any comments about whether there should be some independent body or independent person involved, like even in the hearing?
Well, the independent bodies out, is beyond the town, if you're dissatisfied with the rendering from the town manager's office, you have the right to appeal that to the, you know, to either the assessors in terms of the appellate tax board ultimately, or you could obviously take court action, you know, I mean, any, by, you know, from the town to the, to the district, or, you know, Superior Court, I mean, that would, that would be the, the option as well, there's always an avenue outside of the town.
No, I understand that, I just didn't know if in the hierarchy of going through it, if we typically, if it typically goes through like the whole, the same chain of command, or if there's some, I'm just, I'm looking at the optics of it, Paul, I mean, if they, if they don't like what the superintendent or the DPW Director says, and now it's in your hands, even like at the point where there's a hearing, should there be a member of, if the answer's no, that's fine, but I'm just wondering if there should be another body, person or body there that-
Like planning board or zoning board or-
That provide checking balance out of the chain of command.
Are you looking for like an electric trap to be there?
I don't know, I'm just raising the question of whether that's common.
Well, I think any, other things, like, I mean, I guess you maybe could compare it, say, to a police, you know, when they complain, and that goes up through the chain of command the same way, right?
Okay.
And finally to you.
Or a labor complaint, a labor grievance, employee grievance, it goes to the department head, to the, you know, to the manager, then outside the town, I mean, it's, the town administration is-
And the reason why we got in trouble is we didn't have a written appeals process.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So I have a question, I think there might be a typo on there-
Okay, could be.
The third paragraph from the bottom, the last sentence, the town manager should review the proceedings and decision below, does that below, the word below belong in there?
Oh, no, it should be deleted, sorry, in decision, and within 30 days issue a decision in writing.
May I make a motion that we approve the grinder, grinder pump appeal process as presented?
Second?
So we have a motion, a second, just one note before we vote is, you'll note that this, when we said it was reviewed by council, it's reviewed by Insurance Council, not town legal council, I mean, it technically is town legal, but it's from the insurance company that decided this.
Is that the person who represented the case?
Yes, yeah, and the hope is that if this is adopted, that we'll then present this as a means to resolve the case.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
As amended, thank you.
As amended.
Okay. The next one, I want to formally notify the board, it's happened since your last meeting, although I still don't have any documentation from the state, but on September 25th, the Baker Pleadoo Administration announced 12.9 million in grants for land conservation, urban parks, and climate resilience projects. And in that integrated effort were the Planning Assistant Grant Program, where they funded 21 projects for a total of 1,072,175 in grant funding, and included in that for the town of Chelmsford was a $50,000 grant award for sustainable development strategies for growth at four highway interchanges along Route 3. So again, we will await some formal notification of this in terms of grant documents and so forth, but, you know, I, as I noted at the Finance Committee last evening, I'm sorry, last week, this was, you know, we didn't know the timing of this, we didn't know when it would be released, and, and by no means was this meant in any way to detract from or throw a wrench in the last minute, you know, to the, to the 120, sorry, Route 40 zoning issue. This was, this is part of the whole issue of land use planning and sort of looking at it, you know, what can we be doing in all the areas of the town in terms of enhancement, so, so again, what, once we get some documentation, I'll forward it to the board. My sense is we'll form a citizens committee across the community, sort of vet issues, and then obviously if those issues either come back to the Planning Board, or this board, or others, you know, we'll go with them, but again, it's, it's, it's meant as a tool for looking at what we can do better, because I think we spent a lot of time, and you heard it again this evening, writing Route 40 and Route 129, however, I think you will see in the future, there's probably some significant changes still on the horizon for Drum Hill, and even on 110, you know, in terms of this, you know, we're seeing that, I mean, we, we, we expect the ribbon cutting soon for the Element Hotel up in Drum Hill, and-
Very attractive up there.
Yeah, you did agree to it.
Yeah, they've done a nice, nice job.
And, and, you know, we're still wondering what the future is for Stop and Shop in Hanaford too as well, so.
One side, very small side on an element, there are two poles that are sticking out One side, very small side on an element. There are two poles that are sticking out of the ground that are on the state side of their land that were there from before they redid the rotary.
Yeah.
Is there any way someone in either state or can pull those two? They're just two poles standing up in the middle of the grass, like right in the middle of that nice field they've got. And it's from pre-rotary, or pre-redone rotary.
Are they marking like gas or something?
There's nothing on them. They're like this, whatever the sign was is gone, and they're in the middle of that grass. I noticed things like that.
All right. We'll go check it out. All right, thank you. The next item is the MSBA South Rose School Roof Project Update. Good news is that project is moving along. We received notification from the Commonwealth and Mrs. School Building Authority that they've assigned us with the OPM for the project, which is Jonas Project Manager. That's Jacobs out of Boston, Mass. And then the designer will be Russo Bar Associates out of Woburn, Mass. We met with the representative from Jacobs this morning, the superintendent of Public Works, myself, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Lang, and also the school facilities manager. Had a very productive meeting. The goal, again, is to move this along, get the contract documents in, have the project put out the bid after the first of the year, and then have the work start right at the end of the school year. So, that's moving along, and, you know, we'll keep you updated as that moves along. And then the last thing I have on the report, and it's not on the agenda, but it's timely, but just wanted the board to be aware. I sent it to you by email, and it's something that happened as late as last Thursday evening, is the state adopted, the student, the state senate adopted legislation called the Student Opportunities Act. The debate opened last Thursday. It was completed and voted unanimously last Thursday evening. The legislation now goes to the House. We don't have a date yet when the House will take that up for consideration. We anticipate it could happen perhaps later this month. Then it would go to conference committee, and then the hope is that whatever is adopted would be in place for the governor's release of his budget in January. Last Thursday, I did have a conversation, about half an hour, with Senator Barrett while the legislation was in the senate, and I just expressed the frustration from my perspective, having been in the community now for over a dozen years, that there was really no transparency in terms of what this would mean to the town of Chelmsford. The governor's office released numbers the night before. Those were roundly criticized by the legislative leadership. However, those are the only numbers that have been offered to date. What appears to be the case, having seen what's transpired, is that the town of Chelmsford would continue to receive $30 per student in Chapter 70 education funds under this new legislation. And however, we would receive some additional funding in terms of charter school reimbursements and also special education transportation. But I expressed to Senator Barrett, I said, Senator, I said, the concern is that $30 per student doesn't even match inflation. It's roughly 1.4%. You know, to put it in perspective, it's $150,000. We received that this past year. Our appropriation for our schools was up by $2 million. So, it gives you a sense of the, you know, and in fact, you know, $150,000 from the state wouldn't even, it would provide not even a half of a percent on a teacher's contract, never mind the real cost of living and other contracts for operations. There was an effort...
Covers books for two courses.
Yeah. There was an effort during the debate to amend the legislation to provide a minimum of $100 per community, because there's over 100 communities that will, like Chelmsford, would receive minimum Chapter 78 of $30 per student. That amendment was defeated. There was an effort at $60 per student. That amendment was defeated. Like I said, I think, as we know, this community, so I explained to the senator, I said, you know, one of the concerns in Chelmsford is we receive $6 million less than Chapter 78 than our neighboring town of Westford, which has a similar student enrollment, but a higher family median income. And I said, I think somehow the expectation may have been in Chelmsford over time that this would be the, since the law hadn't been, funding formula hadn't been amended in over 25 years, that this might be the time where the rising tide may actually, you know, address some of the disparities, but more importantly, provide a minimum level of adequate state investment going forward. Again, that's not included in the senate version. I will keep you updated as the House takes up the legislation. But it's, I do explain to him that I think it's going to present some challenges to Chelmsford and other communities going forward. So, we'll see what happens with that. So, that's what's happening on the education funding. We also have not seen any action at this point on the supplemental state budget. So, because why that matters is there was talk about additional Chapter 90 monies. And, again, the state hasn't acted upon that at this time. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
I do have one appointment. That would be for the cultural council. It's Tricia Meskill for an expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
May I make a motion that we approve the town manager's appointment of Tricia Meskill to the cultural council as presented?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to item 10, which is a town manager's evaluation form. And this is something that we were talking about earlier in the year, and then I think it just sort of, as we got busy, we didn't readdress it. And so, I had asked Pat to take a look at what we had had and just sort of clean up the format and maybe trim down the questions a little bit. I think she did a great job. So, with that, this becomes, or I'm asking this to become the evaluation form we'll use next year for Paul's review. And then the second piece was, as we were doing, as I was doing this, it dawned on me, did we actually finally settle on and we're all aware of what the town manager's goals were, what the Board of Selectmen's goals were. And so, I just had those re-added to our packet tonight, just so we could all make sure we agree and we're on track.
But remember, we've done some more work with the goals. Remember, you had that three-column report?
Right, which I'm not, that night when we were looking for input, and I was asking for input, there was a lot of silence and not a lot of input. So, I didn't know if we wanted to just put that aside for a later date, or, because it didn't seem to be going anywhere that night.
I thought we were going to have a work session to try to flesh out what you had, like columns, that here's the objective, here's how you measure it, or how you know when you're done, right?
Right. We can do that if people want it. I don't mind doing it at all. It just seemed like that night I was asking questions about what people thought. I mean, what was on there weren't really my, I didn't pick them. So, when I was asking for input, everybody was sort of silent, so I didn't think...
Yeah, but we did have some feedback on them. I remember one of our meetings we did.
And we talked about having a possible work session to work out things like our overarching vision statement. I thought that was one of the things we were going to do during the summer when we had reduced regular meetings.
All right. So, we'll add, I mean, these are still the topics that we're going to put on that spreadsheet, and then we'll work through. I mean, go ahead, Paul.
No, my thought is we're halfway through the evaluation year. So, my thought would be at your next meeting in November to come in and give you a status report of where I think I'm at in terms of these 10 goals that have been assigned to me. And then from there, that may then flow in terms of feedback from the board of what additional items you want to see over the next six months. So, that might be a way of priming that pump.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we're halfway through the year. We can't really then take the goals we laid out and start sharpening them with a pencil and saying, oh, Paul, they've changed, because we're six months into it. And these really weren't run with, or at least that format wasn't run with. Go ahead.
The only question I had about the evaluation form is when we used the previous version of this, there's nowhere on here that you actually rate against the actual goals. So, I didn't know if we were, had been considering, you know, just having a, at the end of it, here's the list of goals, and how did we do on this one to five scale? Or do we, I mean, I think in the past, you actually rated against the goals.
There was a section in the end. I was looking to see. In the past, there was a section in the end that we rated the goals.
Well, the section in the end from earlier this year was a place to state the goals for the coming year. It wasn't a place to rate the current year's goals.
I see what you're saying. It was a way to come up with the goals on the old one?
Yeah, it was where you state what the next year's goals are going to be, but we never actually rated against the goals themselves. We rated against the...
That was the first, that was the first section of the old form.
I think in the years past, what we basically did is we took the list, and we went, did he do them or not? And then we had a conversation, and then we went and did the evaluation form.
Okay.
That's, I think, in the past, how we did it. We basically took the goals, did he accomplish it? Yes, no. And then we crossed off the ones he did out of the ones that were new. And then we took the evaluation form, and we all walked away and did our own evaluation form and gave them to Jeanne to consolidate. That's how we did it in the past. But if you want to make, I'm fine with whatever you want to do. If you want to put a place to do that, that's why I attached this.
I'm just asking, is this all, do you only measure against these seven categories, six categories, or do you also measure the goals accomplishment?
Well, that's why I attached this, because I wanted to make sure that the list of the town manager's goals, so that when we were doing this, we had a discussion of whether these were accomplished or not.
Okay.
I agree with what you're saying. I just need help with the format.
Well, I mean, I think it's like, if the board wants to do it, it's, before you get to category seven, it's another piece that just says, list of this year's goals, and you rate whether we did it or not.
Or maybe just an overall one, so you don't have to change it every year, that just said, did the town manager achieve his goals?
Yeah.
You know, rank one to five. And if he achieved seven or eight, maybe you should give him a five. If he only achieved three, maybe you give him a one.
Right. And there might have been an extenuating circumstance or something.
If it individualized, I'd know which ones you were referring to. If it's an aggregate, Pat, I'm not going to know, you know, it could be different. She may have different feelings than you may have or he may have on all those different 10 goals.
We could have a little section there.
So, I think you just put a grid next to each of those goals like you have there with the rating. I think that's what, I think that's what Virginia was suggesting.
That's all I was saying.
Rate each...
The last page is a table that gets tailored for each year.
Rate each goal, right.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I'd rather do it in the individual than the aggregate, because the aggregate is confusing. So, if you list goal one, okay, what's the rating, one to five, or whatever it is.
I'm concerned about traffic. Emily may be concerned about communication with the public.
If you give a composite of 7.3, I'm not going to know what it is inside of there that's feeling. So, I think if you did individually, which I think is what Virginia was suggesting, just put a box next to each of those goals and rating one to five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but do we agree these are the 10?
Remember, we took out, we took out two. This seems we keep getting the same list back, and it always keeps...
So, two's out. Anything else? This is going to be the final one.
Yeah.
And I think one was with the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes.
One became ours.
No, it was a joint. Joint. It was a joint one.
Other than that, we're good.
The only other thing that threw me was the one to five scale, because I'm used to one being unsatisfactory and not five.
You want to switch?
Well, it's flipped from what it was before.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I really don't care.
All right. So, we'll do that and have the final, final draft for the next meeting in November. Yes?
Say that again.
We'll make those changes and have the final draft of this for our next meeting in November. And that's where, when you want to do the update on your, the six months, next meeting, the November one?
Yeah. Because the following meeting, you're going to be busy. You're going to have tax classification, the second meeting in November, and the audit presentation. So, that's going to be a busy night.
So, anybody listening, just, that was a notice. Tax classification, second meeting in November.
And, and financial audit as well.
I thought it was always the first meeting in December, the tax class.
That's where you vote. You vote the first meeting in December. But the presentation, then you have your two-week policy.
Yep. Okay. All right. Section 11 is appointment, discuss appointment of town legal counsel. I noticed that the expenses are right in the front of this.
That's just for labor.
That's for labor. You would ask for a breakdown. Labor counsel was able to provide it, because when he prepared the bills, he assigned each one of those matters a separate code.
Yeah.
Town counsel didn't do that, and to create that would require basically a manual effort of going back and segregating them all.
But this chart you give us, are there dollar signs on any of this? Like, what's hours, what's dollar signs, what's...
Time billed is...
I think it's all dollars.
It's all dollars.
It's all dollar signs.
Because otherwise, I don't think he did 4,000 hours unbill time.
It's all dollars. It's all dollars since inception.
But what I'm wondering is...
For a two-year period.
For a two-year period. So, what I'm wondering, though, is we spent $45,000 on fire arbitration and only 28 on Superior Unions?
That's correct.
Fire was that much more difficult than the Supiors?
Yes. You may, I don't know if you recall, we were in Boston for a prolonged testimony over a multi-day period. Yeah, that was grueling.
Okay. Well, I think we're gonna, I did, are we, Paul's not here. I was going to ask Paul about his, but anyways, so let's go to the...
I think he's in the hallway, if you'd like him.
Why don't we do the next thing, which is the appointment?
Okay.
Because what were you going to do? You're going to ask Paul about...
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I didn't, I think he, I just...
He's right here.
Oh. Paul, were you working on the bills, or were there an option on the bills for...
There's really no way for me to go back and segregate them. Each entry, you know, could have multiple different tasks that were done in a particular day. And the reason that they were done that way is really to keep the costs down. If you segregate each entry and assign a certain amount of time to it, ultimately, at some point, you wind up aggregating more time than necessarily would have been attributable to that particular task. I can do it moving forward.
Okay.
It's not something that's outside of the capacity of our billing software to do. It had never been requested previously, and I just felt that it was simpler and more efficient to do it the other way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, where would you like to start the discussion?
Well, I think we received proposals from three firms, all of which we know are qualified. I think, you know, Paul Haverty and his firm, they've done a good job for us over the past two years, and he does an excellent job, as we know, on land use. Quite frankly, I feel like we've lost some of what the information that we got when we had KP Law before. I think being a large firm, they're able to do things on a larger scale, and it reduces sometimes the cost of some of the things that we get from them, like, you know, they send out updates, you know, periodic update about things that might be, that the state might be working on, that we should be aware of. I know we use them several times to do seminars for how to conduct public hearings, things having to do with open meeting law and ethics and things like that. And I also think, you know, having spoken with some people that used KP Law before, I think it's not unlike the situation that Darlene Lucy mentioned a few meetings ago, when she talked about the outside auditors that we use. We've been using Powers &amp; Sullivan for almost forever, and then there was one contract period where we went to a different one. And the results were the same, but the comfort level that the staff felt was different. It took a little bit longer to get to the final result, like I said, even though the result was the same. And I think it's similar with some of the people that have used different lawyers from the KP Law firm, where they felt like they were better acquainted with the situation in town and better able to answer their questions and act in a more expeditious manner. So, that's my thoughts on it.
Did we, did we ask Paul for like a history of what they billed us over, remember, did we get that, the Coleman Page when they were...
We had that in the last packet.
We had that in the last.
The whole thing was in there.
Was it 190, I think?
Yeah.
For a two-year period?
No, that was per year.
Per year.
Oh, it was 190 per year. I'm sorry, right.
It's about, between what, 190 and 220.
What's our budget for the selectmen every year, roughly?
About $190,000, $195,000. Depends what comes up during the year, I guess.
Are there certain rules, like if we go above 190, you have to...
No. It varies. I mean, it goes up and down depending upon the year.
And there's not a set limit?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a line item budget. It's part of the administrative budget of the town.
I didn't know if there was like, once you go over 250, you got to go to town meeting?
No.
Okay. Who else?
You know, I think the, I appreciate all the information that we have from all three of them. And the costs, it looks like they would be comparable across all three. I mean, my recommendation, if you wanted in the form of a motion, would be to hire KP Law for most municipal services, including labor, and retain Paul Haverty. and retain Paul Haverty as land use counsel.
So, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I did go and try to talk with some of the different department heads and, you know, and I know I got, like when I went down to Board of Health, they were just, they raved about the services they were getting, and they were, you know, 100% pleased. And I also got positive feedback, or not necessarily positive, just neutral, same as what we were getting before from some of the others, so. That's just my input on it.
I don't have any experience with KP or the larger firms. I do have one concern specifically about KP Law because my recollection is that they either couldn't get involved or had to recuse themselves when we got involved with the asphalt plant in Westford because they were representing Westford. And according to their documents, they're representing three of the five towns that border Chelmsford, including Tingsborough, where we may get into traffic issues. From my perspective, it's about accessibility, and I think BBH has been highly accessible anytime I've needed anything. And it looks to me from the background that they come from some degree of bench strength in municipal law in the previous firm and with what they've carried here. And I just question whether, whatever bumps there have been, if those are totally irreconcilable, or if it's about a conversation. And, I mean, I just, I don't take changing legal counsel, I don't think that should be taken lightly. And there was a reason, which I don't have the background on, that we switched, so I'm just, I'm looking for that compelling reason why to switch back. And I'm not sure I'm seeing it.
Was that the case, that KP Law had to recuse themselves because there was an issue with the asphalt plant?
Yes, am I, over a dozen years' experience with the town, that was the only circumstance where there was a conflict between Chelmsford and another town with KP? It was then Coleman and Page over that period. I don't recall any other, and Mike, you served even before me, we don't recall any other issue where we've been in conflict with another community. The asphalt plant was a unique situation. In many ways, I don't think our views were misaligned with Westford on that issue, but they could not represent both parties.
Okay. Do you anticipate similar issues with the surrounding towns that is represented, that are representative by KP? Or, like, how often, how often does this sort of thing happen?
Well, he just said it was once in 12.
Once in 12 years?
Once in 12 years I was here, and then Mike served on the board before I arrived.
Do you know if that's standard for other towns? Is this, I mean, is this like a sort of a lightning strike situation, or?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any pending issues that are, we're going to be in conflict in terms of Overkirk or Westford at this point, or.
That was a real, an unusual situation, the way that all went about.
Aside from like a glaring issue, you know, the one thing that I think is, can be deemed somewhat unfair is that, you know, you've had BBNH for two years, and then you turn around and go back to who you were with. I don't want to send the wrong message to the community that, hey, made it, needs two-year contract, and now we're jumping ship. I think they took a chance with us, we took a chance with them. We did leave KP for a reason. And I don't see any glaring issues with BBNH that we're saying, because of this, they got to go, so to me, it's.
Right, and I'm not saying that there is either. I gave you my reasons.
Yeah, if there's some bumps in the road, as referred to, then I think those can be addressed either, you know, with internal meetings or something like that to figure out what those are, but.
I guess I would just say to that, I mean, given the size of BBH versus the size of KP Law, I think you're talking about opportunities that they have to help us with, you know, being proactive that would not be available to a smaller firm. That would be one of my concerns.
That was only, that was my only question, too. Like, where you have a firm that has such a degree of specialty in land use versus a firm that is huge. KP is huge, from what I understand, and I wonder if having access to experts on so many different levels, whether things maybe get done faster or more thoroughly, or there is less research time? Just because they say, oh, wait, no, hold on, we have, we've done this here, here, and here, as opposed to, I can look this up, and I can research this, and I can handle it, but I'm going to need a little more time to look it up. And that's, that's my only question, is if you have a larger pool of resources to draw from, is it more efficient?
But is it more efficient? I, under KP, with Paul and BBNH, we have extreme accessibility.
Yes.
If it's KP, you're not going to have that.
That's not what they say here.
Well, in the past, when we did it, it was.
Have there ever been, have there ever been issues where, like, was there an accessibility issue?
They never, nobody's ever refused to come out and meet with the board if that's the issue.
I mean, I can't imagine, because that's.
You're not going to call them on the phone.
But isn't that what they're contracted to do?
But if I recall right, that wasn't what we were doing before.
I have no idea.
What do you mean?
Well, before, when we had a question, we gave it to you, and you brought it to them, and then you came back to us. And we didn't call them direct.
And you often had a written response if there were issues that came to the board.
Right, but went through you.
Right, I don't know what you're doing these days in terms of your conversations outside of the administration of the town, so I can't address that. But, I mean, I, you know, I.
Well, let's take the flag issue, for example. If that was under KP, that would have gone to you, and you would have gone to KP, and then you came back.
Yeah.
There would have been no direct.
But that doesn't prevent, that doesn't, that wouldn't have prevented you from picking up the phone and talking to council, whether it's current council or any council by the phone. Yeah, that's my understanding of what works.
I don't understand what the.
Is that sometimes.
I just don't remember having that type of ability before.
I think because sometimes it is better to funnel.
I don't want to, I wasn't regulating the board's use of council with a current law firm or previous law firm. The board wished, and I believe chairs did discuss, have conversations with town council directly over the dozen years that I've been here. So I don't want to feel there's a different model in place.
Again, I was, again, I was new, you know, when we took this vote, I was six months, seven months on the board, so.
So, yeah, my understanding is that for some things, it would be better to just funnel it and have one point of contact because it, again, it's more efficient, but.
Well, that was going to be one of my recommendations, if we reappoint BBNH, that it does flow through a point of contact.
I think Pat had a good idea. I mean, and I think Paul last time wanted, you said you, your labor counsel with Coleman and Page was one of the best that you ever worked with, or something. Right?
I don't believe I said that in open session.
I think you did.
But, no, I said it in closed session, George, but I'll.
No, you said it right there. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Oh, I'll say, yeah, I mean, I have no, I had no issues with the labor counsel that was provided.
I don't think probably, you might have only, this probably be the only one you've had since you've been here at that point.
I've, what do you mean? I mean, I've.
How long has Coleman and Page here?
12 years, but I've also been in this business for 30 years, including 18 years, not with the town of Chelmsford.
Maybe you said it since you've been here, but I recall that because, and I know what my remark was, so. I mean, I would like to keep Paul on as the town counsel and land use counsel, and if you, you know, I don't think you've, the other, the labor counsel has served us well. So to make a change there wouldn't be no problem for me.
I just want to make it clear, I'm not complaining about the current labor counsel. I will make the point, I will make the point that.
That's not what I'm saying.
I was well, we were well-served by KP Law, Brian Mazur, who was the attorney. I think what, I'll say, I'll go on the record, I'm not afraid of offering opinions. You know, if you gave me the choice, I would, you know, I would, you know, go with Brian Mazur. Brian, you know, he had excellent relationship with that. But whatever reason, the board two years ago went away from that. And so, as you know, we're in the thick of things right now, so it's, you know, I think it can be picked back up by Brian and KP Law if that's what the board chooses to do. And perhaps there may be benefits of that, given the tanglements that we're involved with right now in terms of that hearing that's coming up in February. So I don't have an issue with that. I also want to make it clear, you know, that I have no issues with Paul Haverty in terms of his service, and obviously Paul's expertise, as he noted in his document to the board, is land use issues. But it's, but it's clear, and you've heard directly from department heads, there have been some issues that a non-land use area, such as elections, such as, you know, a pallet tax board, such as the collector's office, where there's been some frustration from department heads, you know, in terms of either inefficiencies or, you know, whatever those issues are with non-land use issues. And I think Paul addressed that in his memo to the board. So again, I'm not telling tales out of school, and I'm speaking in public about that, you know. And, you know, again, you've heard that directly from department heads, you know.
And I think here, so what I saw in the, this paragraph here on page two, provision of legal services, it says, "As you are aware, our approach to the day-to-day management of clients' legal needs is through a small legal team led by a primary contact with in-person or telephone availability and coverage for the town whenever and as needed." And so my understanding of lawyers is that you have access to them because that's what you're paying for them for. And certainly, there are some matters where it would just be easier to be like, hey, Paul, like, I'll send an email and be like, hey, Paul, what would this be? And then he can pass it along, especially if there are five of us with similar questions. It's dumb to have that question repeated, but where you have, you know, where you might have differing points of view, maybe, I think that there are certainly times when it is appropriate to have a one-off question from a board member.
I think whatever we do, though, we should have the reach out to legal go through with the chair.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think that anybody should just pick up the phone.
And the previous board's one was to go through the manager. If you recall, Pat, that was the way it was done, because it was an issue of controlling your legal costs. I think that's probably what you were mentioning earlier, Ken, but I don't think it prohibited a member, but it was like, look, we want to make sure that we don't have three or four people calling for the same issue.
Right, and tripling the bill, yeah.
Right.
All right, so where are we?
Well, I'll make that a motion, then, that we appoint KP Law as our general municipal counsel and labor counsel, and retain BBH as land use counsel, but through, let's say, June 30th, 2021.
That's not what George said, though.
No, that's not what I thought you said either.
Oh, that's what I heard Pat say.
But that's not what George said.
George said general counsel and land use and KP for legal, I mean, for labor.
Well, you got a motion, you decide.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion, yeah. Well, my motion is what I said.
Right.
Yep. I will second Pat's motion.
Do we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
It's an opposing motion?
I did, I said I was against.
All right, do we have a new motion?
That's what I mean, like, a new motion.
You going to make the motion, Pat, or? I'm going to make the motion to keep Mr. Haverty's firm on as general counsel and land use counsel, and Coleman and Page as labor counsel.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Three, you vote.
I didn't vote.
No.
I vote yes.
All right, fine, whatever, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't have any real strong feelings, I just.
So that's a.
I like.
So that's through.
Larger resources.
Voting yes or no?
Um, all right, I'll vote yes, that's fine.
So 5-1, ah, 5-0. And that's through another two years.
Through June 30th, 2021?
Yes.
That's effective immediately.
Does that screw things up?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
I just see you doing.
No, no, I just want to make sure I'm just understanding it right, because the only thing that has changed is your labor counsel.
It's labor, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes.
Okay, these were done in four segments because of the four different topics that we covered that evening. And then the one topic where, Ken, you had to leave the room. So I'll make a motion that we approve but not release the first, second, and third segments.
Second.
Do we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll.
It's a roll call, right?
No.
No?
No, we don't, not to approve.
Okay.
And then I'll make the motion that we approve but not release the fourth segment.
Second.
Do we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Before we move on to the next topic, Paul, going back to legal, you had made the comment about bumps in the road. Would it be helpful if we set up a subcommittee of, say, you, two board members, and the heads to talk about any bumps in the road?
I don't think it's personality issues.
No.
It was just a feeling of.
Expertise.
Expertise and responsiveness on issues.
I just want to make sure that everybody's good with it and.
No, I don't think there's any issues.
Okay.
There might be some disappointment by department heads, but I don't think there's any issues. And Paul, I think Paul's been aware of those issues, I, you know, and I think, you know, we can resolve it.
The next one is to adjourn, but do you want to take item 15 out of order?
Well, let's take, yeah.
And then we'll do, go into executive session, not return.
Do you have no liaison reports?
Well, no, we'll do that, but I'm just wondering if you want to just get 15 out of the way. You're right, we can do liaisons first if you want, but.
Let's do it your way.
So let's do the vote for collective bargaining agreement with the library employees?
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, Local 3569, which is for library personnel.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? 5-0. All right, liaison reports. Who wants to start? George?
Almost it, thanks.
Virginia?
Um, just a couple things. The capital planning committee is going to be meeting beginning on Thursday evenings in November. The first meeting is tentatively planned for Thursday, the 15th, at 7:00. And they're moving from the past, when they used to meet on Friday mornings, to meeting on Thursday evenings to help accommodate people who work during the day and have commutes.
So what's the meeting, what's the date of that first one?
November 15th, if that's a Thursday.
Okay.
It'll be the 14th, I think.
Yeah, I think it's the 14th, I think I have the.
Because the 11th is the first.
The dates mixed up.
11th is Monday.
And then the Chelmsford Public Schools, if you watch the beginning of their October 1st meeting, the school committee presented a video that was produced for Project 351. And Project 351 is a nonprofit that promotes youth-led service. And the school system and the town is very proud that Isabel Cole, who's a CHS graduate, was featured in the video as one of the Project 351 ambassadors. So we're very grateful for Isabel and the project for their dedication to the community and growing our youth. Also, from the school committee, as part of its strategic plan update, they will be holding its first public forum on October 22nd. So the public's participation and input in that session is a valuable part of the process for their strategic plan update, and anyone is welcome to participate. I believe it's at the Elks Club.
Emily?
Many of mine were in warrant articles, but there's a stormwater management action committee meeting on, sorry, on tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And it's, it's one of those points of interest, there's not a whole lot to do, but it's, I find it really interesting to see where our stormwater goes and what our engineers are doing to make better use of this resource that stormwater actually is, so.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, the only thing I have is the library, as of October 20th, they'll be open on Sundays until next May. And on October 20th, they're going to have a party from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. It's two, they're. It's to, they're encouraging people to wear costumes, but it's not required. There'll be music, crafts and refreshments. And you can have your picture taken with the wicked witch of the West. And this is to begin their 2020 membership drive. So, everybody come out and enjoy that and sign up for the Chelmsford Friends of the Library for their membership drive.
Great. And with that, I don't have anything, so we'll adjourn.
You wanna do press?
Oh, any press, any left? Any press questions? Good. Motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to regular session for discussion, to discuss strategy with, with respect to potential litigation regarding lead road commercial trucking.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye. That you'd have to do a roll call.
A, a, aye.
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 All right.
Some doubt, remember, that's a roll call.
See, on the thing it said to return, that's what it called.